Good. I call this meeting of the Bryan Independence School District Order. Let the record show the formal board members as President of this meeting has been duly called and noted that this meeting has been posted to the courts with the sections of the Union United States of Government Code, Chapter 551. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present. Citizens may make comments about topics relevant to district business. Topics should be limited to three minutes. Comments concerning specific students or personnel will be heard in both sessions. I ask that you turn off the sound on all electronic devices and welcome the bottom of the conference room for the place.
Oh goodness.
Hold on a second. It just had sound on us.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
And at this time we're going to do some comments. Okay. So we will move on down to our spotlight recognition. And thanks again for the continued sponsorship of PDIT. We'd like to first welcome up our Elementary Teacher of the Month, Ross Elementary. Any day? I don't have a list of who's presenting yet, but it works.
St. Colleen Hamon is our Seoul Ross Teacher of the Month. She's been teaching at Ross for four years. She's dedicated to making Ross the best that it can be. She's earned the respect of the staff at Ross by stepping forward to lead. She's done great boxes to her team with technology and online learning and sharing the skills that she's learned with them. Few people could stop her efforts. She coached Ross at school. This summer she taught summer school and learned some great technology skills and has been helping our staff and other teachers with online learning as well. She steps up to the plate to lead and there's no doubt that she makes sure that things are done well in her classroom and she helps other teachers do the same. We are so happy to have Kylie and I am honored for her to be our Teacher of the Month for Ross.
That would stand far apart now. Smile with your eyes, everyone. Awesome, thank you.
And I might add to congratulate Amy Bay, the Principal of Ross, as the President-Elect of the Texas Elementary Principals and Secondary Association.
Hey, and next up, the Principal from SFA Middle School, Ms...
And I'm going to read on right away. Okay, thank you for the opportunity to present our Selected Teacher of the Month. SFA Middle School proudly recognizes Mrs. Heather Hubert as Teacher of the Month for September. Ms. Hubert was nominated by multiple peers and administrators for this honor due to her passion for teaching, loving her students well, and her above and beyond dedication to support our PDI team in designing and communicating our campus routines, procedures, and student initiatives. Ms. Hubert is in her eighth year of teaching, all here in Bryan, I S D. She is a native of San Antonio, Texas, where her mother served in our nation's military. While spending some of her childhood in Virginia due to her mother's service career, she eventually moved back to San Antonio area and graduated high school. She moved to College Station and attended Texas A&amp;M University, graduating with a degree in interdisciplinary studies specializing in fourth through eighth grade math. Ms. Hubert began teaching at Sam River Middle School as a sixth-grade science teacher. In her third year under Ms. Sally Norvarg, she was encouraged to move up with her students and has been teaching seventh-grade science since that moved. In 2017, as a district re-aligned, Ms. Hubert moved to SFA Middle School. Ms. Hubert's favorite things about SFA are the amazing students and the best staff. She appreciates how supportive and encouraging everyone is and has developed a network of friends that she can count on. She states that SFA feels like family. She currently serves as one of the campus' mentor coordinators and is an interval member of our PDI team. She is also the current designer of our seventh-grade science, school gym lessons, and activities. When asked about her professional plans in ten years, Ms. Hubert said she would like to go back to school for a master's degree and become a school counselor. Ms. Hubert is married and enjoys spending time with her husband Ryan, traveling to the beach and the mountains. They don't currently have any children, but they do enjoy their pets. They have a cat and a dachshund. And she also enjoys reading, watching TV, and taking road trips. In celebrating Ms. Hubert's achievements, it is important to acknowledge that she lives out our district's essential eight traits every day. She even wrote much of the essential eight lessons for seventh grade for the district. Her personal favorite essential eight trait is tolerance. She feels it is important to value and accept everyone. She feels that diversity is what makes us so special. She wants everyone that walks into our building to know they are welcome and accepted just as they are. She states that no one should ever be made to feel less than another because of their culture, beliefs, or identity. We hope you will join our SFA staff as we celebrate and honor Ms. Heather Hubert for leading by example, making others better, and putting children first always.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, now if there's time, we'll go down to the standing committee up there. The city school is first up.
I'm just, uh, John Longruthy and I think we should have a good... That was the first meeting we've had in person in a few while. And I think everybody really enjoyed getting back together. Went an hour and a half when it was about an hour show, I think it was just a little bit meaty. They brought, the city brought with them the new, quote, Director of the BCS Public Library System, Bo, I don't pronounce it right, me or Bo Satten, anyway, uh, she, and she, uh, she knew from the standpoint, she's been active at her reference before, virus throughout, but she's just, obviously, it hasn't seen, she hasn't been able to get out these people very, very well, so that's what we're calling do. But anyway, she, she talked a lot about the system and desire to work with, with our district. I'm glad they made a number more about conversation area, what all the, these district and library systems do together. But anyway, it was nice to meet her. We also got an update on COVID-19, a whole lot from the city, and everybody, the county judge, and the, uh, the mayor, supposed to agree that he means over ten, but I think recognizing that the schools are treated differently in the afterglow. And then, I'm glad we updated the city folks on what was going on with us and the challenges commonly of teachers having to go be both in-person and online and getting them some help with that. And an update on the Travis Pride with, with town park. And that's, uh, I think the highlights, anything you want to add to that.
Uh, the new one, Erin, is very knowledgeable. She's worked for a long, long time in some entity in this and worked with other cities in the United States. And I know that Sheena Dr. Whitbeck talked about connectivity and have a library, both libraries, so one in Brown can help us and we really look forward to just a real, real worker relationship with her.
And she's already reached out to me and I've connected her to our library services, so hopefully they'll be planning some more collaboration.
If there's no questions, we'll move right down to the intergovernmental.
We met today and, sorry, the speaker was Dan Rutledge, no, Dan Rudge, sorry about that. He is with the Bryan College Station Metropolitan Planning Organization. Talked to us about transportation issues in our area now and for the upcoming five years, a lot, a lot is happening. This is an entity that P I S D will have a working relationship with as we plan for future transportation needs, for routes and buses, highways, and streets. So this was a very, very good person to know and I'm sure we'll be working with him in the future.
Yeah, if there's no other comments or questions, we'll move down to the superintendent up there.
Okay, I'll see, Mr. LeVon, are you going to pop up my slide?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So just three things I thought I would share briefly this evening. One, I wanted to give you kind of the final counts as it's going to be effective next Monday on the 28th, the beginning of the second six weeks. We gave, Dr. Varg gave you what we thought it was looking like the last time we were together, but here's, here's what you see. So you can see that in elementary, seventy-eight percent of our children will be face-to-face beginning next Monday, the 28th. You'll see sixty-seven percent intermediate, sixty-five percent middle school, with a small number coming in just for a select class like football or band. And then in high school, it's a little bit split three ways because you have fifty-seven percent straight out face-to-face, thirty percent online totally, but another thirteen percent coming in for those critical classes, the welding, the type of courses where they need to have some face-to-face time. So basically, I think the summary there is in high school, seventy percent of the kids are either face-to-face all the time or coming in part of the time, with thirty percent online. And so as a district, it gives us a total of sixty-eight percent face-to-face. So I thought that would be informative for you as we, as we move forward.
Dr. Whitbeck, I have a question. Is a lot of the high school representation that are hybrid, the seniors that may not be on campus that much anyway because they don't have a full schedule, so they're going virtual and then coming for their either athletics or bands or whatever, they're involved there?
Honestly, I don't have a breakdown by grade level to tell you that, but what I think, I think that it's more, it's not, I almost think it might not, it might be more the opposite, a lot of the seniors want to be there. Because this is their last chance of, in the socialization of friends. But, but, so those hybrid kids, they can be, you know, in a senior level CTE class, for example, but just the kids in band in general, or football in general, or cheerleading and all, they're coming, they're coming on in. We can get you a grade level breakdown, but I don't want to speak, I don't want to speak incorrectly, I'm not, I'm not really sure.
And the increase, so it looks like there was an increase in face-to-face, was it a big jump? It doesn't look like high school changed much.
No, the biggest increase was at elementary.
Yes.
And, and elementary varied from school to school. We had a range, if you recall, from the lowest one was fifty-five percent face-to-face to the highest one was about seventy-two percent face-to-face. But now, I know for a fact that at least one of our schools is eighty-four percent face-to-face. And that principal has, has shared that, so, you know, we can, we can see it by school. So the principals have that information. As they're planning, they're looking at master schedule, they're looking at how they need to make sure, you know, to keep things going as well as they've been going. The second thing I wanted to tell you about is kind of a, a new idea that we wanted to do, and we sent a letter to the teachers last week, I just put it in your board update, and we're sending it to the community tonight. And that is to have a, a special Teacher Appreciation Week beginning next week on September 28th. So as you know, traditionally Teacher Appreciation Week is in May, but we felt like that a lot of the people in our community and in our nation have been very much appreciated and rightly so, all the first responders, those in the medical field. But now our teachers have had to take on a lot of different responsibilities, and so it'd be nice just to give them an extra appreciation. So in the letter, we're suggesting things like writing the child, writing, having the child write a note, maybe filming the child, sending some words, and sending it to the teacher. You can, you know, certainly send a flower, send a treat, all of that, but a lot of things that can be done just to say, I appreciate you and thank you for all you're doing for our child, my child, or for, for me, if you're the child, if you are the child. So just know that you're going to see more about that. I'm going to compliment Mr. LeVon's team. They've already been working on a hashtag, #MakeABryanISDTeacher, and people will be able to upload their story, their picture, their thanks, and we're hoping it'll go viral. We're hoping that the media Chelsea and our friends will pick it up and, and just go crazy with thanking Bryan ISD teachers. And we do appreciate, you know, The Eagle and LaVos and all of the different publications and ABTX and the different youth media that always often shine a light positively on our district. But this particular time, we just really want to say thank you.
Will, will Mark be doing something on behalf of the board, or will we be doing, is there something specific for the board to do, or any way to be a part of that?
Well, we can have you be a part of that any way you want. So just let me know what you think. Would you like us to maybe record a message that we can send out, or you all could be video, we can do, we can, whatever you would like.
I have a much better letter writer than video.
Okay, well then, if you write us a letter, we'll see to it that it goes out to every, I think that would be a great idea.
I just didn't know if Mark had already planned on, he does very well on video, if they were doing something from the board, or if there was something that was set up for us to be able to send the letter, or, you know, even if we just addressed it to the schools that were in our areas, or anything like that, just don't want us to be, you know, to be supporting everyone else doing stuff and then us just go, hey, y'all did good.
Okay, well how about you, you tell us which direction and we'll...
Uh, we, we just haven't discussed it yet, we haven't talked about it. Well, I mean, I, I think certainly any individual board member can, you know, participate in however, but we'll, we'll, I'll have to get with Matthew, Dr. Whitback.
It's kind of a newer idea.
It is, of course, I know we can't talk about it at any other time.
I know, and you're right, so thank you, and thank you for being willing, because I think that means a lot to, to our employees to know that they're supported from the top of the organization and that you all are there and the lot of the decisions you make that they don't even realize directly affect them every day, but they don't always know it, so it's great.
I think it just may be the way, if we want to do individual videos, that's great, or if there's something in writing, it's fine too, it's, I don't know if we all want to be able to say, do the same thing, but...
I want to be in the video with Dick.
Felicia said she wants to see the man.
Flash mob.
I'll have the flash mob, I guess.
And, and that's it. Thank you.
And I would love us to, well, long to lean on how he wants all of us soon.
Oh, I can see that old jingle in this.
Don't make a stance.
A birthday's coming soon.
All right, and that will take us down into, uh, page six, the information aisle. This is an update on the 2019 bond oversight, 2020 bonds here.
That was Carol Byner, we'll be making that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. LeVon. Good evening, everyone. Yes, tonight's update is actually a continuation of a series of updates about the 2019 bond oversight process and a little bit of update about the 2020 proposed bond. As you may recall, it's been a couple months since I've come into the boardroom to give you an update, but I wanted to share this, and it's very timely, because we actually have a meeting scheduled with this group tomorrow. To remind everyone, the voters approved the $12 million bond back on May 4th of 2019, which seems like so long ago, and we promised our taxpayers and the community at large that we would have an oversight process. We formed a comprehensive group of members, which included community members, some of you as board members, parents, school administrators, and many of our district leaders. We began meeting right after the bond was passed in May. Our first meeting was held on June 25th, and you can see we met in September, January, March. We actually held a virtual meeting in May, and we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, which is also virtual. And the purpose of, of this committee is to work in an advisory capacity to the district and to the board. They review the status of our capital projects, our expenditures, timelines, schedules, any deviation from the plan, because we promised all along that we would do exactly what we promised to do with the items related to the bond, and we have kept, kept that promise. Again, it was a $12 million bond, and what I'm going to share tonight is a little bit of a review, because I have come in a couple of times, but for our community members, we want to include it all. We're very, very pleased with the progress we've made on this bond. It all began with the much-needed bus purchases, again, right on the heels of the bond passing in May. We placed that big order and wrapped it up in June with a total project cost coming in at $2.8 million. We had the Bryan High School blue boiler replacement, to remind you on that. We had it planned for our bond project, but it failed well in advance of that, so they had to begin the project much sooner. And this is the one that Mr. Beesall actually explained, that we did not get to leverage the bond resolution. So that $50,000 that we had allocated was paid actually with our general funds and went back into bond savings, which I'll share more in a minute about the savings. We purchased much-needed CTE equipment, again, starting in June, and we completed those purchases in August of 2019, spending over $675,000. But we were so pleased because we rewarded the grant, Perkins Reserve Grant, and we were able to pull back from some of the money that we had allocated in this bond and actually put some of that towards our bond savings as well. So that was a good problem to have, is that we didn't have to spend what we had allocated. We also replaced the roof at MC Harris, started that back in May, closed it out in November of 2019 with a cost of $576,453. And the Bryan High School roof replacement, as you recall, that went on for a while, we had lots of rain delay and the parapet wall issue and all that, so we were in the boardroom a couple of times for that, that particular project, but we have closed it out at over $2 million. So the projects I'm sharing there, they're all complete and they're closed out. Mr. Buckner has come into the boardroom at some point in time and you've taken action to close them out. Moving on, two additional projects that we've completed and closed out was the intrusion-resistant film, which we started back in July of 2019, completing that project in September of 2019 at a project cost of $347,047. And then finally, the district cameras and card readers, that was a big safety and security initiative for us. We began it back in August of 2019 and closed it out in May of 2020 with a total project cost coming in at $784,785. And moving on, these projects are actually complete but pending closeout, and you'll hear from Mr. Buckner actually later on the board agenda, but he's going to be talking to you tonight about the dent, uh, district fence replacement project that we started back in September of 2019. We just completed it in August 2020 and we're looking forward to hopefully closing it out tonight. And the actual to-date cost for that was $1,158,339. Additionally, pending closeout is our mill and SFA roof replacement, which we began back in March of 2020 and just recently closed out in August 2020, and, I'm sorry, completed in August 2020, looking to close those out in October of 2020, with the total cost there amounting to $1,297,071. And then the fire panel replacement for Rafer, Fannin, and Cleated High School, we started that back in June, completed it just recently, September, and then Paul's looking to close that one out tonight as well, with the total cost associated at $186,902. So again, these are pending, our closeout process. And then in progress, we're on the final stretch here with Bryan High School blue controls replacement. This is the project that we've actually come into the boardroom several times. We started it back in June of 2019, and because of the age and the complexity of the project, if you may recall, we would do a little bit of work and then discover something else that had to be done, and then we didn't make an adjustment, and it was kind of a fix-as-you-go with many obsolete parts and just a very complex project. So we're hoping to close that one out in the next month. We budgeted $912,610, and to date, we've spent a little over $850,000, so we're well on our way to finishing that out. And then, new and different, and I'll, I'll go into more detail in the next couple of slides, was the Bryan and Rutter Performing Arts Center upgrades. Arts Center upgrades. That project started in July of 2020. We're anticipating completion in November of 2020. And our budget for that was $420,654. And to date, we spent $112. But that project is still underway. And again, I'll go into more detail. And then not started, but earmarked for part of the 2019 bond, was the TESC re-roof. But we had put that on hold and it remains on hold pending the sale of the facility. So we've not sold it yet, but we have some things in the works. So we're hoping that we reclaim that $205,000 that was budgeted for it. So again, yes, we're in progress. To remind you about the PAC, and we actually came into the boardroom about it, about this. The equipment was in dire need. Most of it had been installed around 1960. This was an old tag we found in the equipment. And you actually took action on this, but I just wanted to remind you because we're going to talk about it again tomorrow with the Oversight Committee. We had some photos again of the old equipment. And the PAC repairs for Rutter Auditorium included were not part of the 2019. So if you remember, this is another picture of what it looks like now. Let me go, let me hold that and go through some of the photos because the photos speak a billion, billion words. These are just some of the photos for the bond projects that are complete with the intrusion-resistant film, the Bryan High School roof replacement, MC Harris roof replacement, Neil Elementary roof replacement. Thank you to Matthew LeBlanc's team with their drone footage on some of this. SFA Middle School roof replacement. We had a specific portion, as you may recall, because the facility is still really new, but they did not replace that part. That was the old Bronco Gym, which is now the library and part of the classrooms. So because of the pandemic and all that, you know, with the kids being out of classes and teachers not in the buildings, we were able to get that done pretty quickly. And then, of course, the equipment with C-Tech welders, sparkles, and welding booths that are in use every day. And then back to the Thymont repairs. This is just to remind our community, I know you recall this because we came into the boardroom, but because this was not part of the original 2019 bond, the bond oversight committee, actually, the process worked beautifully. We went into that group back in January and explained to them that we anticipated some bond savings money and that we had a few other projects brewing. One in particular was Fine Arts because there were much-needed safety repairs that had come to light during the facility assessment. So sure enough, we reconvened back in May with the Oversight Committee and they agreed at that time to allocate some of the savings because we had about an $850,000 quota for these much-needed safety repairs. The priority one, kind of most urgent, was the $420,000 that you approved here in the boardroom for this Phase One. Should there be the Phase Two, any contract or amount deemed for that, we'll come back to the boardroom and let you know. But we want to talk about it with the Oversight Committee tomorrow and have Mr. Corbett update us in more detail. But as far as the PAC project, we started that right after you approved it and around August 17th. Again, we hope to be complete by November 30th. And then the Rutter PAC curtain replacement, all of that is underway and will be installed hopefully in the next four or five weeks. I showed you a picture already of them removing some of the equipment. They're replacing the fire hatch roof. If Mr. Dr. Wunderberger appeared tonight, he would really appreciate this because this is the apparatus that was causing all the leaks, that the water kept dripping on the stage and on our equipment. They're going to fix that while they're at it with all of this. So so far, good news, we're within budget and on timeline. And again, at tomorrow's Oversight Committee meeting, we'll talk more about a Phase Two and any other needed safety repairs to see if we want to leverage any more of the bond savings for Fine Arts. So this, in summary, with the $12 million bond, to date, we have committed $11,337, $337.00 to date for financial commitments. So the potential bond savings is over $382,000 from some of the projects that I just shared with you. Again, $205,200 if we don't have to replace the roof at the TESC. And then we have some contingency money, over $124,000 still remaining with that, for a total of potential savings at $662,993. So again, if the committee decides that they want to spend more towards Fine Arts, should we determine a Phase Two of safety repairs, then it would come out of that. And then any other items, I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion about this tomorrow at the committee meeting. So any questions about, this is the 2019 $12 million bond. Any questions about oversight?
I think that tag that you show and so the antique things that are taken down, Matt could create a Fine Arts panel.
Yes.
For the old civic auditorium, including the antiques, it's showing.
I think that's a great idea.
Stuff that didn't kill us.
Yeah. You know, it's actually incredible because they say the lifespan of some of these products, you know, the apparatus that you saw in the pictures lasts, you know, 20, 25 years. And we got a good 50 years out of some of this. So we're very fortunate that it held up well over time, but it is certainly time to be replaced.
And one of the, I don't know if they're still there or if we still have, but you know, at one point in time, the basement of the civic was going to be the bond shelter for all this part of the city. And it had those bond shelter, the yellow and black, you know, this way, the bond shelter type of sign back in the 60s. So I'm sure there's things like that that we could put into an antique civic auditorium.
It still has drums with items in it that people were able to use should they have to take shelter. And they're down there.
I remember when I was in school here at SFA, I remember I was teaching. And so the kids got to go down in the basement and they came up with hard rock candy that, you know, was probably 40 years old at that time. And we just thought that was the coolest thing because they had all that rock candy down there for people in the community that would ever have to go to the bond shelter down there.
That's incredible. Any other questions about bond oversight? I do want to declare that we plan to continue with this process should the 2020 bond pass. It's really served us well to be able to have this discussion and have a committee advise us in this capacity.
Max wants to say, I went to Silver. You were too young.
I'm not going to touch that. I want to touch that, but I'm not going to touch that. I think we, we started back.
Oh.
My next part is.
It's coming up now.
Sorry. I think I timed out. Too much inactivity. And then just very quickly, this next part of the update is regarding the 2020 bond steering update, just to give you an idea of what we've been doing. And we all know that the, the plan was to add a bond election in May, but because of COVID-19, everything was backed up. But it's, here it is, the end of September. So this, this is upon us and lots of things are happening here in the district. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware and inform our community as well. But the journey began with two bonds, one vision. The 2019 bond, which I actually just explained through the oversight process, was the $12 million dedicated to what we deemed most urgent. We had the facility assessment. They told us all the things that needed to be done right away, including purchasing our buses. So we took care of all that. But we knew that there was much more to be done, hence the 2020 bond Phase Two. And with that, we knew the importance of forming the bond steering committee. And if you recall, I came in a couple of times and updated you on that. And some of you actually served in that capacity. But it was a very comprehensive group of community members, students, some of our teachers, administrators, board members, district administrators. We worked, gosh, over seven different meetings to determine lots of priorities and it resulted in these five categories. And the categories for safety and security remained our number one priority throughout the entire planning process. So the committee agreed to dedicate over $8 million for safety and security, which includes more buses, fire alarm system upgrades, public address system upgrades, which I recently came in and talked to you about that, elementary playground structures, lighting enhancements, fencing to finish out that, bringing us up to security standards, and Meryl Bayne stadium fencing. So again, lots of importance around safety and security. The big ticket item, over $98 million, dedicated to new construction and additions, which includes the new intermediate school number three, rebuilding our transportation and maintenance facility, renovating the SFA middle school annex, the Rutter High School classroom additions, parking lot expansions, Bryan High School outdoor patio shade structures, just to name a few of some of the big items for that category. Priority maintenance, with $59 million dedicated to that, is more roof replacements, HVAC, mechanical, electrical upgrades, plumbing, ADA improvements, site, pavement improvements with sidewalks and parking lots, restroom renovations, exterior waterproof repair, and lots of deferred maintenance. And then Fine Arts, we've talked a little bit about that. But we also have money dedicated in this bond, over $1.6 million, to enhance our Fine Arts department, namely purchasing Fine Arts instruments for our students, but also facility improvements at several of our campuses. And then finally, a land purchase, which is in progress as we speak, to build the new transportation and maintenance center. So again, it's a $175 million bond. And the early voting sites are declared here. The Election Day information is there. This is just some of the information about where you can vote. You can actually go to the website to find more of the locations. Because we did join the ballot with the county, there are more voting sites than we would have had back in May. So the election, as you can see, is, we all know, is November 3rd. Early voting's starting on the 13th. But probably the question that we're asked most as we are out presenting, all of the senior leadership team right now is meeting with different campuses to meet with their faculty and staff to explain the bond facts. We've met with the parent group. We're, Dr. Whitbeck's meeting with many community groups. We have meetings scheduled right up to the election in November, just to give the facts. We certainly can't tell people how to vote, but we can give them the information so that they can go and make an informed decision. And with that, because we have the good fortune of our school board and our finance department, and unfortunately, Mr. Beesaw's not with us tonight, so I'm speaking on his behalf. But we take our responsibility very serious with our taxpayers. So they asked, with this bond, what would happen to the tax rate? And if you can see, and to remind you, back in 2017, with the tax ratification election, we lowered the tax rate by one cent. And then because of the House Bill Three legislation, it went down again another seven cents. And should the bond pass in 2020, we don't expect any increase to the tax rate. So it would remain the same. However, as part of the House Bill Three, and we've talked about this before here, by the '86 Texas legislation in 2019, the ballot language actually must include this statement that you can see there in the yellow. The sentence says, this is a property tax increase. Even though we're saying that it's not going to increase the district's current tax rate, they make all school districts in the state of Texas declare that and actually put it on the ballot. So it does cause some confusion. And I guess the best way to explain it in layman's terms is if Mr. Beesaw was here, it would be to say that anytime you're borrowing money and you're increasing your debt, there is an impact with tax rate. So that's why the House Bill Three came about and made school, you know, school districts declare that. So again, we have to declare that, but we don't expect the tax rate for the current rate to change. So that is all of the update for bond steering. We're just going to be.
This bond will actually be the last item on the ballot. So when someone goes to cast their ballot, starting with the president and all the way down, this will be the last item that they vote for. So hopefully they'll have the stamina to stick with it, cast their ballot.
Yes. Any questions on anything regarding either?
What the restrictions on us speaking about, and I was offered the opportunity to put some signs in my yard. And being on the bond committee as a non-board member several years ago, the rules were very specific on what we could and could not do. So as a board member, am I permitted to have signs in my yard?
Do you want to fill that? He's our liaison for that department.
Yes, as a board member, you can have signs in your yard. And actually, as a board member, you can speak out in favor of a district's staff, however.
In knowledge, yeah, in favor.
And Mr. Dick, you may have more specifics on the legalities of it, but district staff can only talk about the facts when we're speaking as a representative of the district.
That's what I mean. I just needed a clarification. Thank you.
Yes. And we're very careful as we speak about it every single day. It's just the facts and pointing them in the direction of the resources to go learn more about it, just so that our citizens can make an informed decision.
So one of the things I've noticed on social media is when, when I see posts about bond elections just in general, there's a segment of the population who say, schools shouldn't be doing that, that they need to figure out another way. And so I just want us to be really clear with our community that when it comes to these kind of capital improvements, really the only way that we can fund these things is through a bond election, the way our school finance is set up right now, the way I understand it. So just want to clarify that.
I appreciate you saying that. And I think that is the situation in school districts across the state because of school finance. If you take, if you try to do what we need to do here with our general fund, I don't know that it would be possible, especially since we're constantly trying to find ways to pay our staff and to provide them the much-needed instructional resources. The competing priorities, I don't know that it would be allowed. And I think we've got, as Dr. Whitbeck would say, a very no-fluffs bond here. And everything that we're doing is much-needed. And the steering committee, you know, met tirelessly over it, contemplating lots of data. They didn't take anything lightly. You know, it's all driven by data.
Well, and I equate it to sort of what we as individuals do when we plan to purchase a home, right?
Yes.
So you don't save for 30 years and then buy the home in cash. You have a mortgage to be able to do those things. So yeah, it's the only way that we have to be able to do these kinds of improvements.
And as a point of information to clarify just a little bit even more, is that current operating budgets that school districts have range between most often 80% to 87% of the entire operating budget is on the people, the staff. And that's including their benefits and that, all that package. And then you have the operating expenses, the utilities, the things that it costs to just keep all of the buildings going. So by the time you finish with those two huge things, you're at over 90%. So to carve out and say, well, we're going to go build a school is just not even possible unless you were to cut staff tremendously. It would never really be able to happen unless you were able to maybe over a long period of time, on rare occasion, which I know Brian has done, I think at least once in the past many years ago, build a school out of fund savings. But it just, you know, it's a very difficult concept. So I like your analogy, actually, of buying a home. It is very much that way.
Well, I think the district was doing that. Do you have much more freedom to set your tax rate? And so you could possibly, for instance, tax rate, save some money and build up your reserves and then build something. But now we're, as Julie was saying, it's so structured now that we just have pretty much lost our freedom to set an operating tax, make it's not a rich tax rate. It's all pretty much done for us. And so the only freedom we have to ask for help is with our debt service. So it is very true that we are, we are kind of to the point of no choice if we want to build them.
One of the other things that might come up and that would be important to remember is that based on the facility assessment that was done, that you all reviewed and the committee reviewed, the salaries, I mean, the facilities, the demoographer, projected enrollment, and the data that was used, this should take districts four to five years out. So that's another important piece. We did take that one. We did do the two bonds, one vision, and we took the iceberg, took the iceberg off for those immediate safety things that we didn't feel like we could wait. And actually, who knew that we would be six months extended because of COVID to even get to the bigger bond. So it ended up really being a good thing that we did do that. But then I think we're pretty, we're pretty solid for a while. And that's good news as well to share.
One last thing I'll add. The reason we're able to do this and not anticipate a tax increase is because of the good stewardship of the past and that we are able to obtain a good interest rate. There's a lot of things that have happened in the past that are allowing us to be able to do that today.
You're absolutely right, David. That did not happen by accident. It's because of the fiscal management of our school board and the terrific job that our business finance department has done. We are positioned for best-case scenario on that. And some districts absolutely can't, can't claim that. So we're very fortunate. And we thank you guys for putting us in this position.
You know, between what you said, Dr. Whitbeck, and what you said, Joy, and David, maybe you guys could go on the road. You could be this, because it was so, I mean, it's all true. And it's. And it's easy to understand from the way you guys explained it. So Matthew, maybe we could get that on the Brian channel? There's sure something we could get.
I don't know. I really enjoyed that video of that young, I'm not sure what grade she was in.
Oh, little girl?
Oh, that was amazing.
What's Up Bond?
Yeah, it was great.
I haven't seen that.
Oh, it's so good.
Oh, it's really good. Yeah, she nailed it.
And I think that the nice thing, Julie, is that a lot of it was discussed here as brought up in the presentation that we're giving as the staff too. We make a lot of those same points. And we're uploading that video to the Brian channel as soon as we get the window to upload.
Awesome.
No other questions or comments, and we will move on into item seven. Excuse me, the consent agenda.
I move approval of all the items that sit on the consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Harlan, a second by Mrs. Lawler, on the plate.
Aye.
Question carries. And we will move on down into eight items for discussion or acting on our agenda. A business services, consider approval of flooring installation at Brian Collegiate High School.
All right. Thank you for having me tonight. So the, this is for the, like you said, the flooring, the installation of the flooring of the 500 wing at Brian Collegiate, which was heavily damaged from the May hailstorm. We've done the demo on all the flooring, and the original plan was to wait until there was winter break or something to replace the flooring. But after talking with the principal there, they aren't using that wing of the building right now because it's science labs mostly and everything. So we have kind of moved this process up. And we reached out to Spa Glass to do this as a job order contract, which we've been doing for a lot of the demolition work and everything else as well. But once the flooring is received by the contractor, probably won't even take a week, and they'll have it installed. I thought kids in there, I'll touch base with the principal, see if he would be interested in letting them do the work during the school days. But if not, it'll take one to two weekends for them to complete, which we have planned for as well. But this is, the project, the quote for this project is $59,971.
And this one's through insurance claim.
Yes, yes, this is paid through the insurance claim. Yes, ma'am, it's part of it.
I move approval of the flooring installation of 500 wing of Brian Collegiate to Spa Glass in the amount of $59,971 as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Lawler, a second by Dr. Harlan, on the plate.
Aye.
Question carries.
I like things that are covered by the insurance.
Of course, let's not talk about our deductible.
They're really, they still just make some bad information.
And moving on to two, consider approval of closeout Rayburn Fire Alarm Panel Replacement Project.
So this past summer, Rayburn was part of the three campuses that had their fire panels replaced. This project was completed by GNR Fire Detection. And Sean's wife in our maintenance department, he oversaw this project because he's one of our licensed fire alarm people with the district. And so the project went very smoothly. They were able to complete it in August before school started. And all punch list items have been completed. The final payment for this project is $6,402.20, and it was funded through the 2019 bond.
I move approval of the fire alarm panel replacement project for Rayburn to be accepted as complete and authorize the final payment to GNR Fire Detection in the amount of $6,402.20 as presented.
I have a motion by Dr. Harlan, a second by Mrs. Denver, on the plate.
Aye.
Question carries. And consider approval of closeout District White Fencing Project.
So this project originally was brought to y'all last September, so pretty much a year ago, September of 19. And they were, we did a two-part substantial completion. The final substantial completion was completed in August. We had some gate issues that they had to fix and repair, and those were all taken care of. And PBK has signed off on the completion of that project and the punch list items. And just for reference, the schools that did receive the new fences were Bowen Elementary, Jones Elementary, Dowla Middle School, Bonham Elementary, Henderson, Long Branch, Mitchell, Navarro, Neil, Houston, Rayburn, and Ross. So we're able to get quite a few schools with the security fencing done. And the, and I don't know if, I'm sure all of y'all have seen them by now, the fences, but they actually look really well. And Linda in the school has did curb appeal with them with that black-coated fence. The final payment for this project is $56,349.20. And there is a deductive change order for this project as well, the amount of $37,083.83. And it was funded through the 2019 bond.
I move approval of the District White Fencing Project to be accepted as complete and authorize the final payment to accumulate construction in the amount of $56,349.20 and a deductive change order to be accepted in the amount of $37,083.83 as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Harlan, a second by Mrs. Denver, on the plate.
Aye.
Question carries. And I'll take a stand for teaching and learning and nothing on state assessment and accountability.
Nothing sounds more fun than that. Good evening. I have a quick presentation for you to go over some of the new information and, well, just new thoughts that are circulating around the state regarding assessment and accountability for the coming year. But a quick review of where we were prior to all of this happening. We ended 2019 just shy of a B, very, very close. And we were up five points over the year before that, which in terms of state accountability, five points for any district is a massive movement forward. And we were eagerly anticipating the 2020 results when, as we all know, they did not happen. The state was able to waive them because the federal government waived the accountability testing and supporting requirements. Now, what's unknown at this moment is what's to come for 2021, obviously, right? So when we look at the indicators that are stable across multiple years, college career military readiness is stable across the years. And so while we don't have STAR data, we have been and are still tracking our CCMR, which is tied into board goals as well as the state-required board goals in addition to the ones you've already self-imposed for our district and for our teams and with us. So right now, as you look at the data, now it's flowing in, we've actually been marching upwards in this area. And a lot of that goes to some decisions the board put in place in the years prior with paying for CTE certifications for SAT School Day, for PSAT for the younger students, for TSIA testing. All of those things help make sure where our students are positioned for post-secondary readiness. And that's evident there as you look at what would have gone on this year's accountability, which obviously didn't transpire the year prior to graduates 2019, would have been a scale and score of an A. So again, there's lots of other numbers in that, but a scale score of an A. And then looking at the students that just walked the stage with us, still moving upward, a little bit higher than the graduating class prior. And that would be part of the coming year's accountability system with the 2021 graduating, or the 2021 accountability system with 2020 graduates. So CCMR is relatively stable over that timeframe. Graduation rates run also latent, and they are equally increasing. We have unofficial results at this point, but it is at a positive trend, which is a good news. When we look again at the state of testing accountability and timeline, typically the cycle goes such as this. In December, students who need an end-of-course exam retest if they don't already have one. And they get the opportunity to retest in early December. And you can see the windows from that administration. TEA is rapidly expanding the windows for online testing. The goal is for by the year 2022, 23, for the entire state of Texas to be testing online. And so to do that, they're opening the windows and they're phasing things in. And with the board's recent action to allow grades seven through 12 to have Chromebooks, and we know we're going to go much deeper than that thanks to some partnership funding from the state, we'll be poised to be able to do that. But they're increasing the windows, the timeframes, for online testers in particular. And you'll see that as we go through the system here. TELPOS, which is the English Language Efficiency Assessment, is administered in February through April. It's over a larger period of time because it is a combination of paper and online testing. April 6 and 8, you have any STAR test that has writing involved in it taking place. Typically, you would also have grades five and eight doing their SSI, the Student Success Initiative, where grades five and eight need to pass both reading and mathematics in order for promotion. Well, the state has already waived the readministration of those tests and is only going to be offering it one time. So while fifth and eighth grade would normally test in April, they won't be doing so this year. That is being pushed until May with a singular testing opportunity. And they're also not going to hold them, they're not going to have retention committees as based on those results. And then as you move into May, that's your big testing window. May's 4 through 7 is the EOC. And then a larger window there you can see for STAR 3 through 8, even into June 11th. And again, that was TEA expanding that window because many districts changed their calendar so radically this year. But I think it's important to kind of know what the timeline of assessment typically is in a given year. And obviously, the state is still weighing and looking at multiple decisions on how do we proceed in a year where some students are at home and some students are out on campus? Do we require the students to come in? Will there be proctor testing? A lot of those questions are still being circulated and have not been answered. And we'll give you some more information about that. But one point I think is good, and Dr. Whitbeck asked me to look into this earlier. The students who are in grades five through eight, when they test in April, they get the second opportunity in May. And we refine where those gaps are. We get data back, live data back, on how the kid is performing, what their needs are. And we get to do some scaffolding to really build that skill base before they leave us for the school year. That typically results in 10% more students being successful on those exams. So that's important to the success of the student and also the confidence of that student going into the coming grade year. So that is one thing we will not have the opportunity to do this year that I think is worth noting. Looking ahead?
I'd like to add on to that, Dr. Har.
Yes, ma'am.
This is one of the items that I'm going to be sending in as a superintendent to this commissioner to ask for that to be reviewed. Because if you think about it, let's take something in the most simple of terms. You get that first driver's license. You don't pass parallel parking. What do you work on before you take it again? You work on parallel parking. It's the exact same thing with the test. The teachers know exactly how to help the child, what areas are weak, what areas need reinforcement. And now not to have that second chance is crushing to kids. And there's children with test anxiety and everything else. So to us, that was, even though I think perhaps the motive was to reduce testing and reduce all that goes with it, but what we feel is that that's not really in the best interest of the children to prohibit that second administration should a child need it. So what we would like to see is that a district has an option to take the children who need to retest and to give it to them.
It is interesting that it looks like the windows have expanded, except for that one.
Yes, ma'am.
Which hurts everyone. I mean, that's not a positive.
No, and unfortunately, like Dr. Whitbeck said, we want our students, we want them to leave the year feeling confident that they set a goal, they achieved a goal, and they're ready for the next year, rather than just a defining score at the end of the year. We want to make sure that they understand where they are academically. So those windows are going to continue to fluctuate, we suspect, but we'll see how the year progresses and if those windows change. And then certainly any more guidance we get on what that looks like for at-home learners will be important. The looking ahead part, the state could waive the second administration of grades five and eight, but there are some things that they're not able to waive yet. So the federal government has required testing, and that translates down to the states because of the funding we receive through federal programs and so on. With that comes the requirement for each state to have an accountability system and to do annual testing in reading and mathematics and science at three different levels, those sorts of things. So until the federal government provides a waiver for testing and state assessments, states can't extend that grace or that waiver to school districts. And so there's a lot at play. I know there's a lot of people asking for TEA. How could you ask us to do this in such an unusual year? They are also held to the federal government standards as well. So just a little background there. And then TEA has said that they will not make any decisions regarding the 2021 accountability until the end of this calendar year, December of 2020. Likely, it'll be pushed until the January months when we start to see some more information. Because they are meeting with two state-level committees. We have two committees, ATAC and APAC, the Technical Advisory Committee and the Political Advisory Committee. One is comprised of people in positions like me. They like the data, they like the analytics, they know the testing. And then there are those that see the impact of all of that, the political side of it, superintendents, businesses, those sorts of things. And both those two groups advise the commissioner on what the accountability system could look like, might look like, and things to consider. And so those two committees are meeting. Their next meeting coming up is in October, I believe. But they're already circulating a lot of information and discussing and exploring various options. Just a few of those options are here from TEA. These are, again, very, these are four of the deck of cards, so to speak.
As of today.
As of today. That's right. That's my phrase, right? So maintain the status quo. Keep the system as it is and keep on moving and use the data that you can, the closest way that you can. So just keep it. Modify the system is option two. One of the big problems with how to navigate these waters comes with that growth measure, right? How do you compare how a kid grew from last year to this year in reading and math when you don't have the prior year score? Do you go back two years? What does that look like? And how does that impact, given the situation that we're in? And growth being, you know, domain 2A, a good chunk of the calculation there. And then also evident in domain 3, it becomes pretty complex to not have the proxy for a growth measure in all of those calculations. Option three, do a temporary system. Revise or replace the elements, revise the weight and scaling. Again, thinking back to, what indicators are consistent? CCMR, graduation rate. What else do we have? What do we have consistently from year to year that we could draw some conclusions? And then option four is a completely transitional system, minimal indicators, and use 2021 as a benchmark and make something new. But again, this is four of a wide deck of options and cards as they navigate and explore what could they do. Once they have more guidance from the federal government, if there is any different guidance from the federal government, I'm sure that'll play into the decision-making here. But certainly, we do not have a lot of information to share on what testing will look like for at-home learners because we've not been given that from TEA as of yet. But we know right now, they have a calendar, they plan to assess, and there's a window for paper-based and online assessments. So I'm glad to answer any questions you guys have. I don't know, but I have very many answers.
So the expectation at this point is that students will still be able to choose their option for the spring semester? Or we don't know yet?
You mean for at-home or online? For right now, we believe that to be a true statement. Yes, ma'am. Now, whether or not they will allow STAR testing to transpire that way is completely-
Well, that was my next question. Assuming we do have online learners in the spring, even though we can do testing online at school, what does that look like for at-home learners? We don't know.
No, ma'am. TEA would have to find a way to have those exams proctored, which is pretty expensive.
Well, there's a lot of nightmare. I mean, there are some online options. But that's one of the things colleges are dealing with too.
And then the system goes down.
Yeah, no, it's a nightmare.
It's a nightmare. I can't even imagine, but good luck with that. I'm excited for that opportunity.
Dr. Har, other than being on those committees, do we review, Dr. Whitbeck, do you have any of them? I mean, is there- I mean, is there, do they care what Dr. Har or Har think you brought up?
Well, I don't think so, but I have to say.
They should.
But as Dr. Whitbeck mentioned, she is thankful and lucky to be on those commissioners' calls, and she submits questions and comments from the superintendent's chair. And then when there is a public posting of the revised rules, there's always a public comment portion, and we submit all kinds of questions, and they are responsive to those questions. They don't always take them, they can always change what we're asking of them, but they do read them and then address them and sometimes change them. But certainly, the superintendent's reaching out to the Commissioner of Education and then all of the advisory committees that work with the commissioner. It is complicated.
I thought you said it was lucky.
It is lucky. The crystal ball is not quite clear. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
At this time, the board will now convene a closed session to discuss the following items as allowed by Texas Government Code Chapter 551.071 and 551.074. No voting will take place in the closed meetings. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in the open meeting. It is now 7:08.
All right, the sun's shining, we're awake.
Well, yes, we're good.
How they look on the space in my world, guys?
Did they leave?
Yes, they did.
Oh!
They told them to be out.
Yeah, I think they were in the impression they would wait for us.
Yeah, that they were to leave.
Okay. The board reconvened in open session at 9:26. No action was taken in school setting.
I move to uphold the administrative decision with the modification of placement at DAEP for the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Harland, a second by Mrs. Tuan, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
Dismissed, yeah.
Do what?
No, we need to be dismissed.
Okay, all right. Motion carries and there's no further comment, meaning in the